Councilmember Abdulgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Kurtoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We don't have any presentations or awards tonight. We do have a personal appearance by Monique Lewis, Older Americans Act.
I know it says on your good evening, sorry, Mr. Mayor, council persons, am I right, council people? Everybody here. I know on the agenda it says, thank you, I know on the agenda it says the Older Americans Act, but there are two other programs that I need to talk about before I go into detail, or small detail, about the Older Americans Act. In four days' time, on the 14th of August, we will be celebrating an anniversary, an eightieth anniversary of the Social Security program. And I would like to quote President Roosevelt, who signed this Social Security Act into law. "Today, a hope of many years standing is in large part fulfilled. We have tried to form a law which will give some measure of protection to the average citizen and to his family against the loss of a job and against poverty-ridden old age." I am a recipient every month of Social Security. I put a lot of money into Social Security, but I am very glad to receive money from Social Security. The second program that I would like to talk about, and it is celebrating 50th, 50th, 50th anniversary, is Medicare. Now, I know that a lot of people don't particularly like Medicare, and they think it's kind of going downhill. I am also a recipient of Medicare, and I am very glad it was there for me two years ago. President Johnson signed the Medicare Act. It was formed under the Title 18 of the Social Security Act. It provides health insurance to people 65 and older, regardless of income and medical history. Medicare, over the years, has expanded to younger people with permanent disabilities who receive Social Security disability, and those with end-stage renal disease. They added also hospice benefits, and they added also the amyotropic lateral sclerosis, Lou Gehrig's disease. In 2010, 48 million people received care financed by Medicare. Out of those 48 million people, 40 million were seniors. Eight million were people who were younger than seniors, but who had disabilities that did not allow them to work. The, and I think we can be very proud of what happened in 1965. President Johnson came down to the Truman Library and signed the Medicare Act. So, you know, sometimes we always hear everything happens in Washington, or everything happens on the Pacific Coast, but some things do happen here in Independence, close to us, a few miles. The Older Americans Act was signed in 1965, also just ahead of the Medicare Act. Just after the White House Conference on Aging this year in 2015, and I will talk about that in a minute, the senators unanimously approved a bipartisan bill to reauthorize the Older Americans Act. I guess the S means Senate 192. The bill passed under a procedure reserved for non-controversial legislation. So neither roll call nor voice vote was required. If no senator raised objection to S-192, coming to the floor in this manner by a certain time, the bill passed automatically. This was especially sponsored by the National Association of Area Agencies on Aging. The Older Americans Act allows for many services to be brought to the elderly, to the seniors. Not far from here, about six miles away, we have a senior center. The senior center is open every day for seniors who want to be socialized, want to be with others. They receive a meal. If they can pay $2, they pay $2. If they cannot pay $2, that's okay. They don't have to. They're not, food is not refused. There are also many people here in Cass County who are at home, who cannot go out, and who the food is brought to them. Mark is the agency that organizes all the services for the seniors. There are many services, and I was privy in the month of April and May to review some of the contracts. There are nutritional contracts. There are homemaker contracts. There is, of course, transportation. Transportation is not only to the senior centers, but if seniors cannot drive themselves to doctors or to hospitals, that transportation is provided. But what is fantastic is that a lot of these seniors, because of Social Security, because of Medicare, because of the Older Americans Act, these seniors are able to stay in their homes and taken care of, and this, to me, if you look at the cost of a nursing home versus the cost of a person in their own home, which they do better in, we make money. Nursing home cost a year is anywhere between $80,000 and $90,000. That's a lot of money. And so if we can help these people, other programs that the Older Americans Act is responsible for are legal aid. If some of the people cannot afford a lawyer, legal aid is provided to them. Respite care is also provided. And respite care, as I read the contract, I wasn't quite sure what it was, to tell you the truth. As I read the contract, I realized that what it is, is that it is giving some time to the caretaker to be away from their responsibilities for four, five hours, to give them some time to recharge a little bit. And being a caretaker 24 hours a day and night is very, very difficult and very hard. And it's not always possible to be 24 hours with a person. In Missouri, there are 10 area agencies on aging, and Mark is the representative for five counties here. They also represent two counties, three counties, seven counties. It's four counties in Missouri and three counties in Kansas. They do a good job. I do sit on the Council of Aging, and we meet every month, and they do try to cater to all the people who really need the help. The last thing I will talk about is the White House Conference on Aging. The White House Conference on Aging is usually sponsored by the Older Americans Act. However, so far, the Older Americans Act has only been approved by the senators in Washington. Hopefully, it will come up for the House and for the signature for a three-year reauthorization. Nonetheless, on July the 13th, the White House Conference on Aging was, took place. There were members from various agencies, from various churches, from all sorts of places across the United States. They also had organized, and I was not able to attend, there was one here in Kansas City, a video of the seminar that took place at the White House. However, what they did discuss was, one, retirement security is vitally important issue, and as our age, our people become older and live longer, we're going to have more and more seniors. So retirement security is vitally important. Long-term services and support remains a priority. Healthy aging with all the more, has become all the more important because of the baby boomers, who at this time are starting to retire. Seniors, particularly the oldest, are very vulnerable to financial exploitation. And I just heard today, as I was driving here, of a person who lost, the caretaker took money out of their bank account and practically got it down to zero. And you know what they were using it for? To have dance lessons. I'm sure that's not the only thing that they used it for, but, and I have had two or three phone calls telling me I need to do this, I need to do that, and as you can tell, I am a senior, and so I say, no, I don't need anything. But a lot of seniors will not answer that way, and so we really need to keep a close eye on the financials for the elderly. The bank apparently was the one who realized that this person's account was being used. And so the White House has a conference on aging, and it occurs every 10 years. And they have done that since 1961, I believe. I don't know why the difference in time there, but there, I could not get all the, could not pull up all the dates. And so I would like everybody here to realize that you're all getting older. Every day is one day more, but you all must stay active physically and mentally. And I hope that all the people who watch, if they're not watching the Royals game, realize that it is very important to everybody to stay fit, both physically and mentally. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Move on to staff reports.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a report for community development.
Thank you. One item tonight, just to go over the schedule for the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have canceled their August 18th meeting, but they will have a meeting on September 1st. This will be their review and public hearing for the 2016 to 2021 Kaplan Improvement Program. City manager presents the CIP to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they hold a public hearing and then pass a recommendation on for the city council as part of your budget considerations. Those are the only, that's the only items scheduled for that evening and the only public hearings they currently have scheduled. Thank you.
Questions of staff?
What date was that?
September 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catterett. Just a few items from me. Next week, your work session, next Monday, August 17th, will be the rejuvenation of the council's strategic planning process. Dr. Nowbanian will be in here to conduct that first exercise that we've been talking about that had to be canceled due to weather. The scheduled for staff reports in the past, since, I guess, last fall, when we changed things around a little bit, has been that the normal staff reports at the second regular council meeting have been Public Works and Parks, and obviously at the first meeting, Community Development. One of the things that we want to add is a regular report to the council on Arts Commission activities. So we will be moving Mr. Mustine around once again, and the second regular council meeting of each month will be Public Works and the report on the Arts Commission, and then the first meeting of each month will be the Community Development and Parks. Just wanted to let you know about that slight change in the agenda that will be coming up. The third item that I have for you all is just to let you all know that our turn came up and we'll be volunteering to host the monthly Chamber Coffee, which is this coming Friday from 7:30 to 9:00. If you get the chance and you happen to be free, stop by. We understand that there's usually about, oh, 25 to 30 people there. Sherry seems to indicate that with the attractiveness of maybe getting to catch a glimpse of a council member, that population group may go up slightly, so feel free to stop by. The last item that I have is to inform the council that we will be calling for an executive session on the 24th, two weeks from now, to discuss litigation, and the council's new lead litigator for that particular piece of litigation that we've discussed will be coming into town to talk to you all about that. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Any questions of staff? Kevin?
Since we have five Mondays this month, are we planning on using the 5th Monday, the 31st of August, for a meeting?
We do not have that scheduled at this time, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to disperse to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include items A, city council minutes for July 27, 2015; B, accepting the Eagle Glen Trail Reconstruction Project; and C, accepting the City Hall Lights, Light Poles and Fixtures Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. We have the second reading of Bill 3090 by title only, please.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please. I think the appropriate thing to do at this point is for one of the two, which is me and Mr. Stevens, to ask for reconsideration of Bill 3090. Sidewalk assessment.
Okay, thank you.
And at this point, I will ask, I'll make a motion to reconsider Bill 3090. Sidewalk assessment. And I will need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to reconsider Bill 3090. All in favor?
Your mayor, I have a question. Do one of them plan to change their vote from a nay vote to a yes vote? Otherwise, what's the point?
Mr. Mayor, if you give me the privilege, I'd be happy to answer that. I'll explain what the purpose, what my purpose is for reconsidering this. Two weeks ago, this failed on a vote of four to two, and it needed five to pass. And so it failed by the vote not having enough. This is a billable item that we need to pay our contractors, and the prevailing site on this, specifically me and Mr. Stevens, I'll speak for Mr. Stevens right now. I know his sentiments. We know that this has to be paid. And out of respect of the council members that were absent last meeting, we are going to bring this up for reconsideration for the full council. To answer your question specifically, I'm planning on offering up the same amendment that I offered up two weeks ago to take the element of the ADA out. If it doesn't get a second on the amendment, so be it. If it does, that will go up for a vote on the amendment. Basically, my intent is, just like it was last two weeks ago, am I planning on changing my vote? If the amendment doesn't pass and take that element out, then I'm going to say no. But quite frankly, I realize the levity of this bill, and I'll speak for Mr. Stevens also. I know he does too. And out of respect and our duty and our responsibility to our contractors, this deserves to be reconsidered, and that's why I am bringing it up for reconsideration, and I will also speak for Mr. Stevens on that too.
We have a motion to reconsider. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, to also help answer the question, the motion to reconsider is an administrative motion. The motion for, on the substantive bill itself, is a separate vote. What is before us is the motion for reconsideration only to put it back on the agenda. So actually, it doesn't matter how people wish to vote on the bill substantively. This is just to put it back on the agenda. Then there'll be a second attempt.
There is a motion to reconsider. All in favor? Okay, we'll reconsider Bill 3090. May I have the second reading of Bill 3090 by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill 3090 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, certifying the final cost for the installation of sidewalk on certain undeveloped lots located within the city of Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3090, certification of final cost for installation of the sidewalk on undeveloped lots.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3090. Is there any discussion? Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, as I said in my comments just a few moments ago, I would like to amend the motion to remove the ADA element from this and to have that funded through a different funding mechanism. My opinion is still the same, that I believe that this is a project that, or a facet of a bigger project, that should be borne by the community as a whole and not just specific property owners. And like I say, my opinion is still the same as it was two weeks ago, and I've stated that fairly clearly, I believe, and that's my amendment.
We have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend. Is there any discussion?
I'm really concerned about taking that part off of this bill, just primarily because, for example, right across the street from my house, there have been two houses built on corner lots in the last couple of years, and they've had to pay for this. So I'm really concerned that if we don't make these people pay for it, can anybody in the city who's had to put that into their sidewalks on their corner lots come back to us and say, reimburse me for my costs too? Because it is a pretty hefty price tag on that, but it's a requirement for someone living on a corner lot, and so I would be concerned legally about other people who've had to pay for that, bringing that issue to the city, saying, we paid for it on some lots, but they'd like to be reimbursed.
Go on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will answer or give my opinion on that. I'll answer, in my opinion, yes. If they did, then I would think that, yes, they would be, I don't want to say entitled, but have a refund coming back to them. The, here's my justification and where my opinion is grounded, is that the ADA is a federal regulation put on us as a city, us as employers, public places. So people with disabilities can access, just as everybody else does, just like I do, just like all of my colleagues do, on a specific property, a corner. I don't think the intent of the ADA was to be funded by somebody who was fortunately, fortunate enough to be unfortunate to afford a corner lot. I, the ADA is for the betterment and the good of the community whole, not the property owner that is lucky enough to own a corner lot. And I don't, I just don't believe that the regulations that come down from higher entities, higher government entities, should be passed off onto an unfortunate individual, that it seems to be perceived that since those people can afford a luxury, that they can afford a higher tax or a higher levy than their very neighbors next door.
Wanted to discuss the six corner lots, went through, looked at these. I did watch the meeting in its entirety. And one of the places with corner lots has two corner lots, and I added up all the sidewalks that they need to pay for. It's $33,554. To me, that doesn't sound like someone who's unfortunate. It's a developer they've got. They were given notice in January of 2014. I don't understand why it has taken so long for them to take care of this. I know we had a Saturday hearing on this last year. We, meaning the city, not myself, but as a member of Planning and Zoning, I did pay attention to that. And I really think that people should take care of their duties, that they've been assessed.
Go ahead.
I respect, I respect the motion to amend, and in fact, I actually had expressed some question about it initially myself, so there's no challenge with that. I do, as far as making the change, though, I am concerned that, first of all, this is the Americans with Disabilities Act. It's a federal act. I mean, we have to be very careful here, because can we really just independently choose when to exempt out of applying a state or federal law? Just, in that particular instance, I'm very concerned about that, because we're governed by other state and federal regulations as well, be it Department of Transportation, Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Justice, et cetera. So I'm not really feeling that this is necessarily relevant at this point. These are rules that are imposed. They sit on this property pre-existing to the purchase of, in many instances, of these properties. You know, looking through the list, again, I go back, five of the six are large corporations. The other is an individual that purchased the property almost eight years ago. We've reached out for years upon years of notices and communications, not being communicated with. We've done everything we can as far as sitting up here on a Saturday, willing to grant exemptions, and none of this was ever approached. None of these landowners ever questioned this, nor to date have actually ever publicly questioned this. And now we come before us, and again, we've even had homeowners who we've had to put in the sidewalk form. They've come up and paid us, and these six owners have not done this. So I'm concerned about their involvement, how they've approached this. If these landowners aren't up here complaining to us, why are we making this argument outwardly? And again, I think we're opening up Pandora's Box by trying to say that we can choose to arbitrarily disregard a higher law, even if the argument itself has some value or substance. So I think we should push forward.
There is a motion to amend. All in favor? Opposed? Motion to amend fails. We're back to the original motion, Bill 3090. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Bill 3090?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question before we build on that. This has to be the first reading, not the second reading.
This is the first reading, right.
Thank you. All right. Would you call for a reporter?
All in favor? Opposed? Six in favor, two in opposition, and the bill passes. Maybe we have the first reading of Bill 3085, please, by title only.
Second reading, sir.
I'm sorry, the second reading of Bill 3085 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3085 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the final plat for Westbrook at Creekmore, 11th plat, lots 311 through 333, and tract double F, located in sections four and eight, township 46 North, range 32 West, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3085 for the Westbrook at Creekmore 11th final plat.
All right, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3085. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the second reading of Bill 3091 by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill 3091 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, establishing, establishing an intergovernmental agreement with the Raymore Peculiar School District to provide school resource officer services for schools in Raymore and the East Middle School.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3091 for an agreement with the Raymore Peculiar School District for school resource officer services.
I second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3091. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And that gets us to new business. Bill 3093, which requires a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing by asking for a reading of the bill by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3093 by title only, in ordinance pursuant to section 67.110 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, levying general and special taxes in the City of Raymore, Missouri for the year 2015.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Ms. Watson to make the staff report on this, but before she does, I would request, this is a public hearing, in order to allow, and this is a slight departure from years past, but it is a new year, in order to allow for the maximum amount of time for the public to give input to the levy, and also to allow staff the maximum amount of time to assure the accuracy, that the, the assessed valuations that we are receiving are accurate and complete, and to allow us the maximum amount of time to compute based on those assessed valuations being received from the county. I think it would be prudent for the council to continue the public, we could still go through the first reading, have the vote tonight, but continue the public hearing to the meeting on the 24th, and then close the public hearing after we're assured of all of that.
Okay. Ms. Watson.
Thank you, sir. State law requires each political subdivision in the state, except counties, to fix their ad valorem property tax rates not later than September 1st of each year for entry into the tax books. In the staff memo, it explains how the proposed tax levies for the coming year were derived. The proposed 2015 levy, based upon principle of revenue neutrality mandated by the Hancock Amendment, is a combined tax levy of 1.3057, $1.30 and 57 hundredths per $100 of assessed valuation. The staff recommended 2015 tax levy is general levy .4638, 40 and 38 hundredths, park levy .1249, 12 and 49 hundredths, debt service levy .7170, 71 and 70 hundredths. These tax levies are based on the final assessed information received to date from Cass County. Just want to make one last note, that the calculated staff recommended 2015 tax levy is 11 hundredths of a cent, less than the 2014 tax levy amount.
Questions of staff? Thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. Watson, how long, how long have you guys, has staff had a chance to really take the county's assessed numbers to be able to come up with these?
We received the last pass at the assessed valuation numbers last Wednesday afternoon, sir.
And it's, do you normally get those numbers earlier than that?
One of the reasons we are asking for the extension is because the, under normal circumstances, we receive one pass at the assessed valuations before the Board of Equalization, which takes place approximately the third week of July, and we receive one immediately following the Board of Equalization, once the numbers are finalized. This year, we've received a, a few more than that.
So the, the need for possible additional time is not due to our staff's delay or any issue there?
Only in that we want the maximum amount of time to be able to calculate any assessed valuations, and we want to give the county the maximum amount of time to, to finalize those numbers for certain, to, to our confidence level, sir.
Other questions of staff?
A couple of check for understanding questions, if you don't mind. And I realize we're, we're not finished, we're going to probably continue this, but this is people's taxes we're talking about here. And we're actually asking for less, albeit small amount, less than we have in the past year, correct?
That is correct.
And how many years, if I recall it somewhere around 12 now, that we have either held the levy at its current rate or rolled it back? Is that a correct assessment?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As I understand the Hancock Amendment, if the assessed evaluation increases faster than inflation, the city must reduce the maximum authorized current levy on existing property, on the existing property. No change there, but if there's new property, then we get to go ahead and include them in our assessment. What I'd like to know is, what is the Raymore's rate of inflation? How does that determine, and how do we know for sure that the, it is, the evaluation increased faster than inflation did?
The, the Secretary of State's office provides us each year with a calcula, a series of calculation sheet, that, that normally in the slang, you call it the Form C calculation, although the Form C applies to only one component of it. The Form C calculation lists what the Secretary of State's office allows as the maximum rate of inflation. They do a series of calculations to, to come to that number, but we have found that it is usually relatively close to the Rocky Mountain Midwestern region inflation rate from one May to another. It seems to kind of tie to that, I think they probably use that as their baseline number, and unless there's been an anomaly, they stick pretty close to it. This year, that calculation was .8% inflation, so very, very low, so it wasn't too hard for our, especially since it's a reassessment year, for our reassessment amount to exceed that and call for the lowering of the levy, in the operating levies. We are voluntarily rolling back the debt service levy per previous calculations that, that the council is, let us know that, that they're preferring, and in light of one of the other items, it's going to be on the agenda tonight relative to the, the defeasance of the bond issue.
Other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
This is Bill 3093, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3093 for setting the 2015 tax levy.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve 3093. The floor is open for public comment, please identify yourself for record and keep your comments under five minutes. All right, is there any discussion on Bill 3093? Go ahead.
Just a point of order, is it necessary that we include that we're going to keep the public hearing open in the motion?
Uh, no, I believe that the mayor, at the end of the item...
Great, to announce, that's all I need, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Absten, abstention? We have seven in favor and one abstained.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Point of order, I'd ask for a reasoning of abstention.
Why did you abstain?
Because I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure that I understand exactly what it is that you're trying to say to us, because it, it looks to me like there are only a fraction of a point or two difference, and why can't we keep it at the same? Keep it at the same level? I have, I looked up and to see if there were any penalties involved in keeping it at the same, and I couldn't find out that there were any, because in the past, I have seen where some of the other taxing agencies in the Raymore area have not changed their levy, and no problems arose because of it.
Counselor, go on.
Thank you for the, for the privilege, Mr. Mr. Mayor. My question would be to staff, and I, the vote is already called, but I don't, I never hear the mayor declare that it, it's passed on first reading, so I assume that this is still up for, for discussion, and it's in order parliamentary. My question would be to staff, this has to be voted on a second time? Am I correct? That is correct, that's why we're requesting that the public hearing be continued to the 24th, and then it has to be turned into the, similar to the, to Bill 3090, we have to have these to the, by state statute, they have to be in the county clerk's hands by no later than September 1st. Okay, I'm just looking out for my, my fellow colleagues, that way we have enough time to clarify and, and, and get our concerns and, and confusion straightened through. Thank you. And, and if I could speak to that question?
Mr. Mayor?
The reason that we are, that we are actually lowering it is because, and it is by 11 one hundredths of a cent, or for those of you who remember, 1.1 mil, if you remembered as the mil levy. The, the reason that it has to be lowered is because the Hancock Amendment requires it. Our assessed valuation, you may remember my old, the old water balance model that I give, that's not really a water balance, is that assessed valuation goes up, you have to lower the Hancock, or you have to lower the levy, so that you don't collect any more revenue than you did on the same snapshot of property as last year. So we are lowering it to the maximum amount that is allowed by the Hancock Amendment, but we are still capturing the maximum amount that we can, it's simply we, on these two, on the general and park levy, but we have to lower those according to the Hancock Amendment.
All right, and the first reading of Bill 3093 is passed, and the vote is seven, we have one abstention. We'll leave the public hearing open until next meeting, and we'll move on to the first reading of Bill 3092 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3092 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, establishing a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials and candidates for elective offices.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir, I would call on Ms. Warner.
Thank you. Missouri law requires that political subdivisions with operating budgets over $1 million adopt an ordinance at an open meeting, making public its method of disclosing potential conflicts of interest. The only public officials that need to file a financial disclosure statement the following year are the chief purchasing officer, the chief administrative officer, and any employees or elected officials who have had a transaction in excess of $500 within the, with the city. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3092 regarding the financial disclosure ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3092. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have a reading of Bill 3089 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 3089 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling Construction, Inc., for the 2015 sidewalk project, city project number 15-219-201, in the amount of $129,326.40, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir, I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On June 8th, city council held a public hearing regarding the 2015 sidewalk project, and then authorized staff to proceed with bidding the project. Bids for this project were received on June 15th and are summarized in our memo. During our, our due diligence and our review of the bids, two bids were, were determined to be non-responsive, the bid from Sterling Construction and from Phoenix Concrete and Underground. The reason they were non-responsive is they both failed to fully comply with the submission requirements. Sterling Concrete, or Sterling Construction failed to submit an E-Verify statement, and Phoenix Concrete and Underground failed to submit a bid bond. These are both fatal flaws in the bidding process. We do look at things like, we check math, those type of things. Those are, those are minor errors that can be overlooked and irregularities that council can waive. These two specific requirements are requirements that are considered a major flaw, and therefore the bids have to be considered non-responsive. This, these requirements are outlined in the RFP when we send it out. We also hold mandatory pre-bid meetings, where this is also outlined to all the prospective bidders, and so they are very aware of this requirement, and so for that reason, staff is recommending award to Terry Snelling Construction as the lowest in responsive best bidder.
Questions of staff? Please, go ahead.
Mr. Crass, have, the, the two vendors that were non-responsive, have we utilized them before in the past?
Phoenix, Phoenix Concrete and Underground, I believe, did the sidewalk, did the sidewalk gap project, the, the project that you just did the assessment levy for.
And were, were they, did they, well, I understand non-responsive in the sense of compliance, but did they communicate any of these concerns, or is, I was just kind of surprised that, to lose two out of four, especially with somebody we worked with before?
I, I will turn that over to, I don't know if Ms. Watson knows, because what, when we receive the bids, we, they are turned over to the purchasing department for their due diligence, so I don't know what conversations. My department checks the math, checks, double checks some references and those type of things, so we have a, a separate, separate checks and balances for the, for the bid award, so I, I don't know if Ms. Watson has any other insights in, or any discussions that occurred with, with the vendors.
With the Phoenix vendor, when they were contacted by the purchasing specialist, they did admit that they failed to supply the proper information, and appreciate that we do double check that, and they feel that that makes it fair for all bidding opportunities. So they did not feel that they were inappropriately excluded from being a qualified vendor.
And if I just might add, of the two, the failure on the E-Verify is a really fatal flaw. I guess the bullet hole is bigger on that one, because that, that is absolutely federally mandated. The bid bond is obviously, we mandate that because it's our only protection on the bid. Both of these vendors were, as, as Ms. Quoddy put it, she is our purchasing specialist, remarkably docile in understanding that they had messed up.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank staff for including the explanation within the packet, so anyone, including myself, or anyone that looked at it on the website, could understand how the bidding process worked. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What's the, I, I know it's, we got a, a soon passage, what would be the estimated timeframe for completion of the project, Mr. Crass?
Late, late fall.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3089 for the 2015 sidewalk project.
I second.
The motion is second to approve Bill 8039, 3089. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have a reading of Bill 3097 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 3097 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with McConnell and Associates Corp. for the outdoor athletic court resurfacing project, city project number 15-224-201, in the amount of $83,700, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir, I'll call on Mr. Mastine. Thank you, sir, I'll call on Mr. Mustine.
Thank you, Sarah Mayor. This before you is, really what it is, is a project that's long coming, and I'm pretty excited to bring it to you. This is three different projects that we combined to utilize our resources and, and hopes to get a better, better price for our, for our buck here. What we did was, we sent out a bid, and I'll let me give you some history. Tennis courts and basketball courts typically need to be resurfaced about every eight to 10 years, and then depending on the nature of the, the asphalt, we could, you, you might need to reconstruct the entire facility about every 12 to 15 years. What we're doing here is a maintenance item, which is a resurfacing. What we have with the, the basketball was most recently done in 2007, Memorial Park was most recently done in 2007, and the recreation park tennis courts was reconstructed in 2012, but there's some significant cracking and, and some surface work that needs to be done. So, this bid is to fill cracks, resurface, repaint, all three projects. In efforts to get the best quality work, we required bidders to have a certification of Tennis Court Builders Association, which is certified tennis court certification. We sent that out to, and to ensure that we got the best work, and we received one bid from McConnell and Associates. Our person, purchasing agent has done the, the reference checks, they are a local Kansas City company that does have a history of working in our, in our parks, so we're very confident that they can do a good job. We've worked with the school district as the fall tennis season is upon us, so we'll be working with the athletic court director and the tennis coach to work around their season and ensure that very minimal interruptions are incurred as far as their seasons, so.
Questions? Evan?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I appreciate staff's concern and work that they've done on, especially the tennis court maintenance. I remember this being a topic of really big discussion here a couple of years ago, as to why it was deteriorating after we had redone it. So, I, you know, as a representative of the taxpayers, I, I appreciate the, the thought, the, the work that goes into this. I, I'm kind of surprised that it's only $20,000 that I see here. I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with that. Just, I, I mean no malice, it's, it's nice to hear staff coming with, with good news, even out of a, a, kind of a terrible situation from the past, so thank you again, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. I was on Parks Board when we had the issues with tennis courts after them being recently resurfaced, and I certainly think this is a good and worthwhile project. I don't know that I ever got a solid answer as to why our tennis courts cracked like they did, and our vendor at the time was not very responsive in fixing that problem, and, and as Councilmember Kellogg has already referred, a lot of discussion over that and unhappiness. As I recall, the closest thing I got to an answer was inferior materials, and I'm just curious as if, do you, you weren't here at the time, I know that, if you have any knowledge of that, and if we feel certain that we won't have those kind of problems again.
I, I can't speak specifically on what went wrong at that point. I know what we've done, as far as our research here, is we've sought out the best locally and the best nationally to not duplicate these issues again. Now, I can go back and find out what's going on, and I can, if Mr. Crass has anything that he would like to add, he was here at the time.
Please do, we have the city engineer. I was just going to do that.
Having a little bit of history with, with tennis courts and another life, I think the best thing that we can do moving forward is, as we did here, is assure that the people that we hire are certified by, by a professional organization, or pre-qualify, pre-qualify the bidders. There are some special techniques that need to be used with tennis courts to make sure that you don't get a cold joint failure, which is what, in my opinion, has occurred in those tennis courts. And, so there are some techniques that, that have to be used, and some extra care that needs to be done, to make sure that that joint does not, does not separate, that you get a complete mat when you, when you resurface that, and I think moving forward with a pre-qualified contractor is the best way to assure that.
Thank you, sir. I, I know there's no guarantees in life, but that makes me feel better about it. Thank you.
Mr., I'll start with a statement. I do also recall during those discussions that year, part of the problem that, that was, in trying to determine the problem, is we were going through an extreme heat wave that year, so heat, I know, was one of the factors that at least I, I recall the vendor using as an explanation. Mr. Crass, though, you mentioned the joint failure, I, I don't want to take very much time, but could you please explain what you believe the issue was? Just, I mean, I can see cracking out there, I went out there, but could you just briefly explain, what do you mean by the joint failure?
I think what, what you want to do is, when, as the mat cools, especially with a, with a tennis court, is you want to make, you need to make sure you're going up against a hot, you're going up against another hot, a hot joint, so you, so the material is melting and adhering together. So, you need to maintain the temperature of the mat when you're, when you're doing that, and it's a little bit different on, on road construction, because we can tolerate an overlap in the, in the, in the joint, and that's why you, we'll see a little bit rough, especially like on Lucy Webb where we just overlaid it. You can see the center line, and that's because the, during the roller pass, the next, the next subsequent pass kind of overlaps onto the, the existing mat. So, you can, you can tolerate a little rougher finish there. You can't tolerate that on a tennis court, so the way you avoid that is by making sure that the, the, the pass that you're budding up against is the same temperature, so it, it binds together.
Got it. And my final point, so Mr. Mustine, I'm assuming the previous vendor will not be included in the list of consideration?
That is correct.
Evan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, at the risk of being wrong, I will take that risk. I, I remember those, those discussions, and just to give refresher, and if I'm wrong, Mike, please, you know, staff, correct me, my colleagues that may remember that, please correct me. I remember part of the discussions, you know, that we, as the council back then, we approved a contract of somebody to, to rehabilitate our, our tennis courts back then, that was a street paver. They didn't specialize in tennis courts. I, I know it looks very similar, you know, and, and we think it's the same, but there are nuances and, and special procedures that need to be taken, like Mike has, has pointed out, so again, I'll, I'll point out and, and thank staff for keeping that in mind and taking that into consideration with this, this time around.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3097 for an outdoor athletic court resurfacing project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3097, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have first reading of Bill 3098 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3098 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri amending the capital budget of the fiscal year 2015 budget.
Staff report?
Thanks, sir, I'll call on Mr. Mustine.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the budget amendment that basically funds and appropriates money to do the contract that you just signed off on for a first reading. So, what we did with this is, we, we, we kind of did some, some work, and we unfunded one project that we felt was really, it's not inappropriate, it just wasn't ready to be done yet, but we had some additional work to be done for the facility maintenance enclosure, and it was going to be much more expensive than we anticipated, so we wanted to, to reallocate that money towards the tennis courts. So, we want to unfund one, and then in efforts to do them all at one time and get a better price, we want to accelerate another project and bring them all together at one time, and that's what this amendment does.
Questions of staff? Sonya?
Just a quick question, and this probably is just a guess, how much would you guess we're saving by doing them all together?
What we had budgeted was 105,000 total for all three different projects. When the bids came in, it came in at 83,700. With this amendment, we also included a 10% contingency, so we're asking for right around 93,700 to cover that. So, we did save a significant amount, I feel.
I wanted to thank the Parks staff, and 20 years ago, I was a athletic department, buildings and grounds person at MU, and typically, the people in maintenance are the ones that are, their projects get pushed back, and the money's going to serve the citizens in, at large, this year, and hopefully we'll come back and, and take care of the maintenance staff later with their enclosure, but I do want to appreciate, I understand that there will be some things that they could have used, that they've been, were looking forward to, and they're going to hopefully look forward to it in the future, and I appreciate their little bit of sacrifice that they're making, so thank you.
I normally wouldn't ask this question, but since Monique is in the audience, and we were on Parks Board at the time, and I know she plays, are you going to stripe for pickleball courts again?
They will be striped as they are now.
Thank you, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3098 for a budget amendment for the outdoor athletic court resurfacing project.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3098, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the reading of, first reading of Bill 3094 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 3094 by title only, an ordinance authorizing the escrow of funds sufficient to pay a portion of the outstanding general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013, of the city of Raymore, Missouri, and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Ms. Watson to make the report, and Mr. Goffey is here, if there are any technical questions regarding this particular item.
Thank you, sir. The city has expressed an interest in keeping the current debt service levy at .7170 and placing a no-tax increase bond issue on the ballot in April 2016. Per council discussions in April of 2015, it is necessary to devote a portion of the debt service fund balance into paying off a portion of a Series 2013 bond issue early. Staff worked with the city's financial advisor, Piper Jeffrey, and recommends approval of Bill 3094.
Questions of staff?
It can be either for Mr. Fearborn or Ms. Watson. If this action is specifically being done in consideration of a no-tax increase bond issue in 2016, the money that's being paid, this is reducing our debt service fund balance. There are no general funds being spent, this is not going to change the assessment of our levy or any of that consequence.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and if for some reason we do not have the bond issue successful in April of 2016, our position is not worsened by paying this? So, we're, we're, it's good, we're paying our bills, we're paying our debts, it's a benefit, it's a win-win regardless, is that correct?
That is correct, sir, and would point out that we are also, with this, we would, with this defeesence, we would be able to have a debt service levy that is just slightly higher, 72...
75.
Seven...
7275.
7275, right on the tip of your tongue. But we, we are asking council only for 7170, so we're still rolling back the levy in the debt service fund.
As one of your struggling students in the back row of Finance 101, for those of us that slept through all the information, we're basically paying off a loan early, is that a over-generalization, correct statement?
No, that's exactly on the mark, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, correction, a portion of that loan.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3094 for the Series 2013 bond issue, the partial defeesence of the 30, Series 2013 bond issue.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3094, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the reading of Bill 3095 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 3095 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2015 operating budget.
Staff report?
Thanks, sir, I'll call on Ms. Watson.
Thank you, sir. Before you, as a general housekeeping item, the fiscal year 2014 budget included several items that were contracted during fiscal year 14, but not completed until fiscal year 15. Unlike the capital expenditures that can carry over from year to year when a project's not completed, the operating budget items do not do that. Unspent budgeted amounts are just rolled into fund balance at the end of each year. So, it is necessary to bring to you a budget amendment that would allow for the fiscal year 14 committed amounts to be reallocated to the fiscal year 15 budget, so that each of those departments do not go over budget in their individual line items.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3095 for the amendment to the fiscal year 2015 operating budget to address the fiscal year 2014 encumbrances.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3095, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes care of new business, move on to public comments. Anybody from the public would like to make a comment, please state your name for the record, keep comments under five minutes. See, nobody come forward. Andy-dandy list of random council members. Councilmember Holman?
I am going to defer my time to the remainder of my fine colleagues on the council, sir.
Councilmember Stevens?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Barber?
I've got a, I guess, a selfish, want to thank Mr. Mustine and his staff. I signed my daughter up for a ball sport, and I'm a person that needs my handheld, and they did a good job, got me all signed up, and I wait till the last minute, emailed my receipt, so it was a very easy process, so just wanted to thank you and your staff. Thank you.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to, I didn't get a chance to do this two weeks ago because I was quite passionate, and my mind gets wrapped up in a subject, and I, it, it doesn't, it doesn't wander, but two weeks ago, I was able to meet with the Arts Council, I'd like to thank them for their time, and all of their, their communication and, and input that, that they gave, and it was very nice to sit and meet with them, and it was appreciated. The other thing that I would comment on tonight is, I thank Mrs., I'm, I'm sorry, Monique Lewis, Ms. Lewis, for being here and, and addressing what she did. Kind of a, a, she hit it on the head on a very personal note for me. One of my former coworkers, when I was in the powerhouse, an elderly, I, I'd say elderly, but I don't want to say anybody's elderly, Ms. Joyce Thomas of Belton, I had the honor and privilege of working with her in the powerhouse at Honeywell for seven years, and particularly on third shift, when I was on third shift, she retired, she took a severance when our company had a, an opening or decided to move to the new plant, and she was one of the lucky ones that got a severance package to go out after 41 years of service. And, you know, she was very fortunate enough to have 41 years at a company that she had a pension, and she also drew social security and, and all of that, and she was fairly active. It's, you're absolutely right, when, when, you know, and I'm 48, and I am getting older every day, and I do feel it. And I watched my dad do this, too, when, when he retired, and I wa-
When, when he retired, and I watched Joyce retire, they, they didn't keep their body active. They didn't let their mind keep active. And unfortunately, I, I, I'm sad to say that my coworker passed away last Wednesday. She only got to enjoy one year and one week of retirement. So you are absolutely right, how imperative and important it is for, for folks to keep their mind active and busy. I just can't say enough for that, you know. People sit and think, well, the, the circumstances where we work is high risk in that, and there is some truth to that, but it firmly, I firmly believe that I've seen too many people that I worked with for many years that were so healthy through all those years, so active, and then just sit in a chair. It's sad, and, and I don't think it has to happen. So, you know, thank you for, for putting a comment to that and, and laying that out like you did. And that's all I got tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Burke.
Wanted to start out thanking one of the constituents of Ward Two. This is the first time in forty-eight years that Ken Simon will not be going back to teaching. He taught for forty-eight years, forty-seven of them in the Raymore Peculiar School District. I've been teaching about twenty years. I cannot imagine doing forty-seven years, forty-eight years. My parents are retired, and they say the same thing. But if you think about, if he only had a hundred people a year for forty-seven, forty-eight years, there are about five thousand people, and that's not including the coaching, about five thousand people that directly spent a day, you know, an hour a day with him for, for all those years. That's, that's a huge, huge giving to the, the people of Raymore, and I wanted to thank him for that. And hopefully, he won't have too many of the going back to school nightmares where you, you wake up and you're like, why, the whole school's different, and my classroom's somewhere else. I haven't, haven't had one. I imagine I'll have one Thursday night, probably after I go back. But I wanted to thank him for his service, and, and I've forgotten my other comment, because I guess this one was more important to my heart. Thank you.
Councilmember Abdalguad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that note, with back-to-school season, the kid is going back to school on Tuesday, not tomorrow, but of next week. Just a quick reminder to watch out for those school zones. Sometimes in the summertime, we get used to not having to slow down there. So remember next week, starting on Tuesday, to slow down. And of course, because I'm a teacher, you have to say a little prayer for all the teachers going back to school, and not, and also the moms and dads that may be sending their baby off to kindergarten, or sometimes their senior off to their last year of school here. So just keep in mind, school starts next week. And I also just wanted to take a minute to thank Ms. Monique Lewis for coming to talk to us tonight about the Older Americans Act and legislature, legislation on aging and the elderly. It was very informative. Thank you very much. Interesting to hear about the beginning of social security and Medicare. And thank you for your work advocating for the elderly and aging in Missouri and in Raymore. I think that's, that's a big job. We need people to do that, so thank you for doing that. And also for the reminders of the importance of staying healthy and moving, keeping your mind and body active. So, thanks.
Councilmember Hubach.
I took a good look at my tax statement, and I'll be getting another one in a couple of, of months. And one thing that I noticed on it is, we have two levies. We have our general levy, and we have our park levy, but only one levy shows up on the tax statement. And I would like to see, since we have two levies, I would like to see each one of them listed separately, so that the people have a better idea of exactly how the money is being spent. Can that be done?
Per your request, we have been in touch with Mr. Vink's office. Mr. Vink is not quite sure which office is actually responsible for the printing of it at this time. So we took it upon ourselves to go ahead and call Mr. Houston's office to find out if maybe he might know. Ms., he had indicated that he was going to ask Ms. Shipley, who has been around longer. So basically, the entire county is now working on who's responsible for actually printing the bill and getting, but everyone did seem very open to the idea of, of the fact that other entities on there do have it split out. And it would actually be three of our levies, because the debt service would also be on there as a separate one. But all the other entities that are listed on that tax bill, each of their levies is listed separately.
Thank you. I hope Raymore is one of them next time.
Councilmember Morehead.
I wasn't going to bring this up, but Councilmember Burke brought it up. Ken Simon taught my brother and I how to drive, and we predate going, having him as a teacher back into the late seventies. And I had the pleasure of guest lecturing in his last class this last semester. So, boy, it's amazing how it's, we always talk about life cycle. That's, that was a pretty long life cycle, so have to at least give a shout out for that. I, I always look forward to Ms. Lewis's presentation. That was very informative, as having two parents that moved me here when Raymore was under a thousand people, and everything was still gravel road, to see, and them raising me from a child to now them being in their later years and needing some assistance as well. These are all very important issues and throughout our lives, so I appreciate all the information there. I was approached this morning and asked to present something which I'm happy to do. You know, our former council members do go on to do other things. I do wish to announce, the National Association of Counties has honored former council member Ryan Westcoat as a member of a National Human Services and Education Steering Committee. He is the only county-elected official in the state of Missouri on this committee. So Mr. Westcoats has gone on to do other bigger things, and so he deserves a little shout out to that. But he did also point out this morning that the agenda seemed pretty light, and I actually have to differ with him, because, you know, I, I have never hesitated to thank the staff that's specially up here at the front. But you know what? Over the last year, dealing with tax levies, budgets, and bonds in another capacity now, I've taken a greater appreciation to Ms. Watson, who deserves a shout out. She had to work pretty hard tonight compared to what we normally put her through. And I, I think it's important to note, the other finance members of our staff and the people that go through this, because those numbers can be pretty grueling, but are exceedingly important and do affect our citizens incredibly. So while the budget may not, or today's agenda may not say exciting phrases, they're exceedingly valuable, and the commitment of that staff as well occasionally deserves the shout out. So I want to commend that staff, too. So with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll echo everybody else's comments and give a shout out for the Raymore City Market tomorrow. The weather should be incredibly comfortable, seventy, mid-seventies, light breeze. And the depot framing is up. So if you're out at the market, take a, take a look to the south, and you'll see the depot's starting to take shape. Do we have a reason to go into executive session?
Not tonight, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? We're in adjournment. Thank you.